Twenty twenty-four to order and ask you to please rise and join me in the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Tammer, please call the roll.
Deuter.
Here.
Veremis.
Here.
Hill. Absent. Shenko.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Nudera.
Here.
Bastido.
Here.
Nardini.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Erby.
Here.
Three present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. I'm with you on that, alright. Thirteen present, one absent, and we have a quorum. Announcements, are there any announcements from the dius this evening? Seeing none, public comments, clerk Tammer, is anyone signing up for public comment for this committee at the whole meeting?
Yes, Mayor, we have Dan Virgil.
Mr. Virgil, state your name, please, address is optional, and you have three minutes. Please proceed when you're ready.
Uh, Dan Virgil, um, I just wanted to comment on a couple of points from the, uh, the plan that was posted on board docs. Um, one thing I noticed out there, uh, for the, it was a section on, um, the capacity of the parking decks and the utilization. Um, in looking at the, uh, the percentage utilization that was listed there, you know, we've got on average about seven hundred free parking spots in the, free meaning not used, in the, uh, the parking structures, the four parking decks. Um, you know, seven hundred, that's, that's roughly equal to the, the capacity of the Addison Street Garage. So we've got a lot of extra capacity in parking, um, in parking decks. Uh, a few weeks ago, I submitted some written comments about some suggestions in order to get some value out of those, that extra capacity. I'm not going to go through all of that now, but, you know, if anybody would like to, uh, take, go back and take a look at that, I would appreciate it, or if you want to, uh, talk to me about it, I, I would be happy to discuss it. Um, the other thing I wanted to, to comment on was the, um, uh, the plan recommended removing, uh, some existing bike, uh, routes on, uh, Cottage Hill between, uh, First Street and Church, and then also along Park Avenue. Um, in order to have, uh, a well-connected, um, uh, you know, parking infi-, uh, sorry, bicycle infrastructure, uh, it's going to require, you know, interconnected paths. Getting rid of these two, uh, bike paths or bike lanes, uh, leaves kind of gaps in the grid in order to, uh, ride a bicycle and get to a lot of the attractions in, uh, in the downtown area. So I would, uh, request that those not be eliminated. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Tammer? Alright, is there anyone in the audience that did not have the opportunity to sign in for public comment that would like to do so? So please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on to the business before the committee, which is a city council presentation on the downtown plan, the existing conditions report, and a working session. So, as we get ready to, um, take this on, let me tell you what we're doing and what we're not going to do. So, uh, there is a public participation event on Wednesday at Elmhurst University, where people will be participating and giving their ideas. Um, what we want to do for the council tonight is to present the existing conditions and talk about some of the areas, uh, more information for us of what's come up and things that seem to be of interest based upon past input. Um, we are not going to go into what we would opine should or should not be done, and I don't think it'd be fair to ask you to do that until we are, uh, both up to date on the existing conditions, see what topics we are likely to be looking at, and have the benefit of the public comment and participation from Wednesday's meeting. So with that, I will turn it over to city manager for additional comment and introduction.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as you said, we initially had this planned in the, uh, the proposal from Housal Levine, uh, to be a visioning session. Uh, but with the way that the dates worked out with this meeting and the public meeting on Wednesday, and I and staff and Nick Davis from Housal Levine met and talked it through and decided that tonight would be best served presenting the, uh, the downtown plan existing conditions report. And then, uh, we will reconvene at some point after the visioning session, the public visioning session, to talk about what the downtown plan should be. That would be the full input for the city council's consideration. So with that, I would turn it over to Nick Davis with Housal Levine.
Okay. Alright, uh, well, thank you for giving us an opportunity to, kind of a presentation of where we're at right now. I'm going to go over a couple of different things. Uh, we want to go over just an update on the process of the plan, so where we're at, what we've been doing, and really where we're going to be going next. I did want to give an overview of the existing conditions memo. Uh, we'll talk about next steps, so after the visioning workshop on Wednesday, just kind of going over where we're going in the process, we're going to start transitioning and what that looks like. Uh, and then we did have this working session discussion, mainly me going over a lot of the topics that we've talked about or that we've heard throughout the process. And it's going to start to formulate the direction that we see the plan going. We still have a lot that needs to be done with the public engagement component of this. So the visioning workshop on Wednesday is going to drive a lot of what these topics want to address. But these are some of the big buckets that we've seen so far through all the different outreach that we've conducted up to this point.
Let me add, uh, recently posted on your agenda for this meeting are copies, so if you don't want to be swinging around, you can follow along.
Okay.
And is, is that microphone good, or do you want the handheld mic?
Uh, I might be taking notes, so I was afraid the handheld might not work for me. Do you need me to talk louder? I can talk louder.
Yeah, it'd probably be good.
I'll go, I'll go a little louder, alright.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, so just about the planning process, so again, why do we do this? What's the purpose of the downtown plan? Uh, it serves as a blueprint over the next twenty years. It's going to assess the downtown's issues and strengths, identify community desires, needs, and aspirations. We've already started to identify some of the issues and some of the concerns. Um, like I said, this week, this Wednesday is when we start to really pivot and get more into, what are your desires? What would you like to see? What, what should this plan aspire to? So we're starting to move into this, uh, phase. It should guide a broad range of topics. It's going to be policy, it's going to provide recommendations, there'll be actions in there. Some of this will inform potential amendments that you may need to make to your code. It may identify future plans and studies that you need to conduct. And then ultimately, this should inform decisions on improvements and development. Uh, one of the things that we always say is, it's not just about development. There's a lot of improvements that can be made in the public realm, enhancements that can be made. Uh, so we want to make sure that this plan sets a stage for, when you are considering future enhancements or improvements to public realm or private property, is it consistent with the community's vision for the, the downtown? Uh, the scope of work was broken up into five steps, and so we have project initiation, community engagement, existing conditions, vision goals, functional subareas, and then ultimately the draft and final downtown plan. We're somewhere in the middle right now, this week's a, a big week for us. We're kind of tying up loose ends on the existing conditions and moving into the vision goals and functional subareas. That visioning workshop, the one that we're having on Wednesday, it, it really does kick off step four. So we're still in the existing conditions, obviously presenting it tonight, um, and then talking about that with the, the community on Wednesday. But then really the feedback that we get from the community on Wednesday is what's going to start to inform the vision, the goals, the functional subareas, and ultimately the preliminary recommendations that we're going to identify in step four. Alright, so for existing conditions, and there's, there's a, a lot of different components in here that I want to go over. Um, we broke it up into five sections, four sections. Um, introduction and context, lane use and development, urban design and public realm assessment, and transportation and parking. These four elements, these four existing condition components are going to be consistent and start to move through the actual downtown plan itself. There'll be some additional sections as well, or chapters in the, in the downtown plan. But these should start to kind of thread in and tie back to what we're actually preparing in the plan. So hopefully there's some consistency as we move through this, and, and you'll recognize if this was the issue, you know, here's some solutions. Uh, introduction and context, um, it does what it, you know, is designed to do. It provides some, a setting, the regional setting, so this is where Elmhurst is, in the overall Chicago region. Uh, it identifies the downtown study area, uh, gives some context to some of the surrounding communities, competitor communities, uh, places that were identified throughout the outreach. Things to just consider when you start to think about the types of uses or what you're trying to attract and, and who you're competing with in the region. We did review several past plans and studies, I won't go through all of these. Uh, but it is important to get a, a good understanding, a baseline of what's been done in the pa-, uh, the past. Uh, like I had mentioned before, when you do these downtown plans, you know, we're going to put as much as we can into the recommendations and the, and the policy. But there are going to be some additional studies, could be traffic studies, could be, um, development studies, whatever it might be. Uh, there are some additional documents or reports that the city may be preparing that want to get folded into this over time. So just making sure that we're not losing context to, you know, good reports or good plans that are out there and bringing that all into one document, one, um, one voice. Community outreach, so we've conducted several points of community engagement throughout the process so far. We're not done, we're about halfway through the engagement process. This is where we start to switch gears a little bit. Um, in the beginning, when we were doing the, you know, city department heads workshop, or when we did the, the zoning and planning commission and DPZ workshop, and even like the business listening workshops, that's more about tell us what the issues are, what are the challenges, what are the problems that you're seeing. Uh, the downtown plan working group, uh, or the downtown plan workshop that we conduct, and same thing. You know, we collected a lot of different feedback and a lot of different, um, issues. We do need to start, you know, from here, transitioning into, okay, then how do we solve some of these issues? So that's, that's a big part of what we're hoping to accomplish in the visioning workshop. Um, there was a public kickoff workshop, we did a, uh, a residence workshop. We did, and that was both, you know, kind of in, in the study area and in the surrounding area. Economic Development Commission workshop, Public Arts Commission, uh, the Walkin' Rollers Working Group, and also the Senior Commissions Workshop. So we've talked to a lot of different groups, those were sort of our in-person engagements. We did have online participation as well. Uh, we had a downtown housing, uh, discussion, a downtown business development, and streetscape signage and gateways are the main takeaways from a lot of the outreach, uh, feedback points. Those are sort of the buckets. Um, you can get a general sense for where the feedback's coming in, in the community, so you can kind of see the study area there in the center. Uh, so it is coming from, you know, throughout the, uh, the overall community. Um, kind of a good map to see that, that dispersion of, of input points. Uh, some of the key themes that we saw, uh, both on the map social, which is an online mapping tool, uh, were things like transportation and parking, uh, green space, gathering spaces, character, quality, and design. Um, some of the things that we also heard from the engagement were, you know, where problematic intersections were, uh, identifying some potential opportunity sites for future redevelopment. So this is just a, a kind of combination of all the different collected points that we have, uh, on this map on the right. We did do a demographic snapshot, we looked at things like population, racial composition, age, education, um, housing, housing cost burdens, uh, we looked at income. Part of that was just addressing, uh, different issues that we'll have to talk about in the plan down the line, uh, kind of tied back with some of the feedback that we started to receive. Uh, we looked at the employment numbers, unemployment rate, uh, inflow, outflow, so that's the graphic that's off to the right with the, the two circles, just showing, you know, who lives in Elmhurst and where they work, if they're, if they're working in Elmhurst, if they work outside, that type of thing. Uh, so the next section, section two, is about lane use and development, again, existing condition. Uh, so we identified the existing lane uses, um, geographically, you know, within the downtown, uh, provided some descriptions what the makeup of those uses are. Uh, we looked at things like what the ground floor use, um, ground floor non-residential uses are, and ground floor residential uses. Uh, that's just helpful for us to get a better sense of where the commercial service office type uses on the ground floor, and where are we seeing standalone multifamily or single-family type development. So the graphic on the, on the left, or, well, I guess on the right, um, that just shows where you have multifamily buildings or single-family attached, or even single-family in the, in the downtown study area. Uh, current zoning, so we did review the current zoning. We know this is going to have a direct impact on the, uh, the functional lane zones that we'll be talking about as we move into the next phase. Uh, so the current zoning is really a direct response to the previous downtown plan that was prepared. Uh, we want to make sure that we go in and maybe start to fine tune some of these, some of these requirements. Um, and that's going to start with the downtown plan. So we're really, we're focused on policy in the downtown, but this is going to inform potential amendments to your code. So we want to make sure we have that discussion during the visioning workshop, that we articulate that and make that more clear. It's something I'll talk about a little bit later. Uh, we identified historic resources, assets to the, uh, to the downtown. Um, you know, things that you want to take into consideration, you want to make sure you're, you're acknowledging and preserving. Uh, you know, future development could emulate these styles, not, not mimic, but just try to pull some of those elements. So just, uh, managing historic resources and making sure that there's something that are considered when you look at redevelopment around those sites. Uh, urban design and public realm assessment, so this is where we're starting to focus more on the actual public realm itself. So within the right-of-way, uh, maybe more city-owned properties. Uh, one of the first things that we looked at, we're building fabric and the street wall. Uh, the graphic on the right is just so, uh, showing those lines are showing where there's a consistent street wall in the downtown. So if it's, if it's green, I'm making sure I'm saying that right, if it's green, it has that urban street wall. It's where those buildings are brought up to the street, it's your more traditional downtown building footprint. Uh, if it has that, that red, it's where we have some surface parking lots in the downtown. That is where you start to get a break, it feels a bit more suburban. Um, these are design considerations that in the future, if these were to redevelop, you may want to bring buildings up, or you want to simulate a street wall, could be landscaping, could be architectural features. Those are the types of things the plan will need to address. Uh, building heights by structure, so we identified all the different buildings throughout downtown, uh, identified the heights, you know, one floor, two floor, some of these are through, uh, three to four, five to seven. You go all the way up to nine floors, the one building along Robert Palmer being the, the one that's at nine stories right now. Uh, we identified the approach routes. This is something that we did talk about with a couple of different stakeholders, and it was even a discussion point in the public workshop about how, how people actually come into the downtown. And some of them are driving, um, many of them are walking or trying to bike into the downtown. So just making sure that we're considering all these different access points, not just the major thoroughfares. Um, you know, aware that the, the plan's going to need to provide some guidance about how people are walking in, uh, what that, that wayfinding and signage needs to look like, you know, at these key points. Uh, landscaping is certainly something that we'll talk about, the plantings, what's appropriate in a downtown streetscape. Um, a part of that is driven by these right-of-way dimensions. So this graphic on the right is just showing the varying right-of-way dimensions that you have in the downtown. This is not unique to Elmhurst, I would just say some of the, maybe more, um, again, not unique, but some of the challenges that you do have is you do have some tighter right-of-ways. You have some sixty-six foot, seventy foot, seventy-five foot right-of-ways, and that just puts some limitations on what you can do to program that space. So, you know, a lot of people have a vision of what a downtown streetscape looks like. One of the first consid-, uh, considerations is the constraints, and it is that, that overall right-of-way width. Uh, we looked at the pedestrian network, uh, mapped out where different components were, where the mid-block crossings, sidewalks, pedestrian cut-throughs. So you have a lot of elements that are already here, and being able to improve upon this and make these some considerations for future development are certainly something that we want to talk about. Um, it makes it a much easier way to navigate through the downtown if there's a lot of different pedestrian, um, options. Uh, the streetscape and then the street, streetscape tiers or types are, are something that we'll definitely want to explore later on in the process. Um, just starting to break these down into a, a more, what I'll call like a regulating approach. So, you know, you have what's that type one, um, like a core downtown streetscape, that red, that's York Street. It's where you're probably putting the most amenities for the pedestrian in the, in the streetscape. You're going to want to emulate that on the orange, where you're starting to feed into that core, um, so that's your type two. Type three, and, and you're already doing some of this. I think you're going to see this being kind of a consistent build-out when we get to the plan. Type three is where it's a little bit more, um, uh, it lacks some of the streetscaping that you'd like to see. It should pull some of the elements from either that type one or type two. And then ultimately, the last one is that residential streets. Uh, I think that is a pretty consistent look and feel, you might have varying right-of-way, but you know, you have the pretty classic, uh, edge of pavement, parkway, landscape trees, sidewalk, and then kind of into the, the private realm. Uh, sidewalk zones, and this is something that we'll continue to revise, uh, revisit and revise in the, in the actual plan itself. But I do think it's important, and we'll talk about this in the visioning workshop. These sidewalk zones are, are kind of a, a newer approach on how you want to start thinking about, um, the sidewalk and the streetscape. So we're really looking at, uh, the edge of the building, so that, that serves as that, uh, building frontage zone, that bright orange. You have that pedestrian through, and this exists in a couple of different places in different communities, but consistently yours is, the pedestrian through zone is along the building. Uh, and then you have a buffer with that, uh, furnishing and landscaping zone. That's where your tree plantings are, your tree grates, some of your site amenities might be trash receptacles, could be some benches, um, lighting, that type of thing. So this is a, a pretty consistent theme through your downtown. It's something that we'll want to start to think about how we program this, how do we maintain that through zone, um, just for safety and ADA accessibility? And then what can we do inside of that, uh, furnishing and landscape zone if we do kind of reimagine the streetscape? Uh, we talk about what the elements of the sidewalks are that you have, your pavement system, uh, plantings, uh, lighting and street furnishing. Gateway signage, wayfinding, parking signage, and, and other signs were, were something that came up quite a bit. I would say probably one of the most consistent discussion points in all of the, uh, workshops that we had conducted are the engagements. Um, signage came up m- more than when we did the plan back in twenty fifteen. Uh, this was, this was a talking point, you know, people feel like the gateways, you know, might, might be time to revisit those. But it was more about the wayfinding and the parking signage. I'd say that was probably the biggest discussion that we had is, you know, how do we address some of the perceptions of parking? And part of it is people just don't know where it is. And you do have parking signs, so some of this is a messaging, a consistency, a branding issue, um, something that we certainly want to address as we move forward. Um, outdoor dining was another discussion point that we had in, in a couple of different workshops and, and events. Um, outdoor dining kind of comes in a lot of different forms. Uh, you have the traditional outdoor dining that's on your existing sidewalk, that's up on the curb. Um, you have these permitted parklets, there's only a few zones where you allow for it, uh, along York Street. So that's a different, uh, approach to outdoor dining, where you're putting them out into the street, out into the on-street parking. Um, you know, there's a couple of different approaches about how we would address this in the plan. There's a desire for outdoor dining, there's a desire for it to look different or function differently. So the plan's going to need to provide a couple of different options to make sure that everybody feels like it's a bit more consistent with what you're trying to accomplish. Uh, the last section was transportation and parking. Uh, for the transportation, we, you know, reviewed the current roadway network, uh, we looked at some of the traffic controls. The truck routes and loadings were a, a discussion point in a couple of different meetings. Um, traffic controls, just looking at your, your signalized intersections, uh, where you currently have some of the always stops, where you have stop signs, those types of things. Um, there's some traffic patterns and traffic controls here, working with KLAO A as a subconsultant that we'll want to revisit when we get into the plan, especially when we start talking about how lane uses could potentially change. What would the impact be to your current system, or the capacities need to, uh, be to maybe support whatever that future use might be? Uh, freight rail, metro, railroad crossings, talked a lot about railroad crossings with the new metro station improvements that are, um, you know, coming online over the next couple of years. There's, there's going to be that improved, um, uh, pedestrian underpass, you know, it's a bit wider, uh, different lighting. So I think that checks a lot of boxes for people wanting just a, a much safer way to, a much safer and, uh, um, an easier way to, to do the underground pass, uh, under the rail. Uh, pace connectivity, just looking at the routes that are coming in through the downtown, uh, where some of the key locations are for pickup. Um, again, just tying that public transit with, you know, your metro options, your pace options. Um, so you have a lot of different opportunities for transit. I don't think there's going to be expansions to any of these lines by any means, but just tying into these and taking advantage to leverage these, um, is something that can help make downtown just continue to succeed in terms of, you know, bringing different people into the community and getting them out. Um, walking, biking, so this is something that we'll talk about. Uh, this is an identification that comes from the, the pedestrian and bike, or the ped, bike and ped plan. Um, there's some components in here that we're certainly going to want to review and evaluate, like I kind of just talked about before with the roadway network. If there are improvements to some of the sites for future uses, there could be opportunities for additional connections, uh, for bike routes. And the other, the other thing that did come up quite a bit is, you know, maybe, you know, if these are the routes that are dedicated, there might be opportunities just for additional bike infrastructure and facilities, different ways to, once someone is in the downtown, um, you know, where are they parking, how are they walking around, how do they get back to their space? Do they have, um, safe facilities that they want for their, their bikes? Uh, parking was probably one of the other themes of many of our discussions that came up quite a bit. I would say I've never done a downtown plan where parking isn't one of the bigger talking points. Um, parking is handled in a couple of different ways in a downtown. Uh, we did identify all the different types of parking that you have. Uh, we went through on-street parking, the parking decks, um, you have private and public parking. So there, there is quite a bit of parking that serves the downtown, um, in terms of meeting its current capacity. There doesn't seem to be the issues, uh, that you, you often see in some other downtowns. Um, but there are some perception challenges with parking, so that is something we'll talk about, uh, in the plan. You know, off-street parking versus, um, on-street parking, on-street parking versus, you know, using the parking decks. Um, signage to those, uh, different parking facilities is something that we know is an issue and we got to address. Uh, and then just, um, oop, sorry. Um, and then the, the last thing with parking is, and we've, we've talked about this in a couple of different, um, events and in a couple of different discussions, are there, there are the perceptions of parking and that there's a lack of parking. There's also a, a problem with walking, some people really don't choose to and want to park in front of the use that they're going to. That's where the downtown plan is really going to need to provide better guidance on different ways to park, different uses, how people need to start coming more accustomed to using the, the public lots and the parking decks. Um, let's get those utilization rates up on the infrastructure that you've invested in. Okay, I know that was a lot to, to put at you. Um, as the mayor said, this is available online, uh, you have an opportunity to review it. If you have any questions, um, pass that to Eileen, Eileen. And we'll make sure that we incorporate any of your feedback into the actual planning process as we move forward. Uh, speaking of which, a lot of text, but, uh, next steps, uh, step four is us starting to work through the, the process of the vision, the functional subareas, and the, the preliminary plan memo. So what that step's going to entail are a couple of different tasks. We have the downtown visioning workshop, which is this Wednesday. We have the city council presentation, which we're doing today, which we talked about. Um, once these, these, uh, workshops are complete, once these discussions are going to complete, our team's going to start, start working on the, uh, vision and goals, and the functional subareas, and the preliminary plan memo. So four C, four D, and four E are going to be one, one deliverable. So it's going to be a vision statement, the goals for the downtown, and a preliminary, uh, plan memo. That, that preliminary plan memo is basically an outline of the draft plan. It's going to look very similar to what we just talked about for the existing conditions, but it's going to give a bit of guidance based on the feedback that we've received up to this point about, you know, these are the topic areas that the plan needs to talk about, and these are the directions that we want to take some of the recommendations inside of that. So I'm going to go a little bit more into that in a couple of slides, but that's, that's what's coming next. That's going to be the beginning of what's going to start to, to be the downtown plan. So that's a, that's a really interesting deliverable, we're excited to, to start putting that together. That'll go through a city staff review and discussion. We'll work with the downtown plan working group to, to kind of tighten that up, make sure it looks good. We'll come back and meet with the zoning and plan, uh, zoning and planning commission and DPZ. Uh, just taking that through the process, start to get more, uh, or additional feedback. And then once we get the head nods, once everybody's, uh, kind of working in the same direction, then we'll start moving into the draft plan. We do this because we don't want to spend a lot of time on a, on a bunch of recommendations that just aren't consistent with what the community wants to see. Uh, so we'll make sure that before we go into the actual plan itself, we kind of vet that process. Um, then we go into step five, we'll do a community open house. That's where we'll go over the vision, the goals, we'll go over the functional subareas that we've identified, and we'll talk about the preliminary plan memo. Um, once we feel like we have the support from the community, uh, once we make sure that we're, we're talking about the right topics, then we'll start drafting the, the downtown plan, that's five E. Uh, that'll have the implementation framework, a regulatory strategies framework, conceptual plans, and illustrative three D visualizations for some of the concepts that we'll have for the opportunity sites. So that's the downtown plan along with these additional components. Uh, that goes through staff review, working group review, uh, we'll come back and, and we'll meet with the zoning and planning commission, uh, then we'll meet with DPZ, and then we'll come back and meet with, with you, city council, to, um, you know, make sure that this is the direction it needs to go. That's when we'll start the adoption process, uh, by that point, and I'm, I'm sure we'll have some, um, people from the public. I'm hoping people from zoning and planning commission and DPZ attend, just to make sure that, you know, this plan reflects what the community's been asking for. Um, there'll be an opportunity for people from the public, obviously, to see this as we go through the presentation process. Uh, but yeah, once we get to five J is when we really start the adoption, the adoption process. Um, these are, these are components of where, or these are meetings that we're hoping to see you. Obviously, I'm seeing, uh, you today as part of four B. Uh, four A, uh, any city council member that can attend on Wednesday, the visioning workshop would be fantastic. Uh, you know, we encourage you to attend, both to hear from the public what they think their, uh, ideas are, what the big aspirational targets should be for the plan, um, but also for you to provide that kind of free, uh, feedback and influence the group, um, and be a part of the discussion. And then for, um, uh, five A, it's another opportunity, the community open house, to come out and hear from the public. Uh, five J would be the downtown plan when we come back and, and meet with city council for adoption. I know the mayor had talked about before potentially coming back another time, which is something we can certainly discuss if we want to do like a check-in on the visioning workshop, or if we want to do a check-in somewhere else, we can, we can certainly try to accommodate that. I'm imagining that's what we were talking about up here, so, okay. Um, project timeline, this is a little tricky to, to maybe track, but basically, we're still on target and we're trying to get this adopted, you know, this year, so our target is in November. Um, I know the November, December, uh, dockets get a little busy, so we're trying to get this in, in earlier in November, um, just so this can be something that we can go through, um, you know, vet it in the, the review process to make sure that it's lining up and, and kind of meets the community's needs. There's a lot of meetings between now and then that need to happen, um, and also a lot of work on our end to, to actually prepare the plan documents. Uh, but we're on track so far and feel that we can, uh, achieve this timeline, kind of based on where we're at. Okay, so now just the, the working session discussion, I guess any questions? Did you have one from before? Go ahead.
No, just one on this one, what are the D E V, what are those, uh, letters?
Yep, um, so D is a deliverable, V Yep. So D is a deliverable, V is like a virtual meeting, E is an event. I know that's not intuitive, but.
Thank you.
I can add that into this because I think this will get published. All right. Yep.
I apologize because this is a very generic question and I want to make sure that I'm on the same page. I don't know, nine months ago, or maybe actually almost a year ago, before last summer's outdoor dining, there was discussion about doing myself, Alderman Hill, Alderman, Veremis. The city council approved kind of a temporary outdoor dining plan. And several aldermen, those that I just named, suggested a broader look at, you know, how do we accommodate outdoor dining? What do we do about the downtown? How do we kind of wrap this all together? Is this that? Is this meeting that question that we had a long time ago? Because this seems way bigger than that question. That's why I'm asking. This is like we're redoing the downtown plan again, all over, the full thing.
Well, I would, the last time I think it was 2016. So I would, this isn't supplementing it. This is replacing it. Is that?
Correct.
So this is the new downtown plan and to that extent, the, the parklets, the outdoor dining, that is to be part of the plan. I mean, we were kind of addressing, coming out of the pandemic, what people were used to. And now we're trying to make it more permanent and we could be different, could be the same. I don't know.
Okay. Thank you. Can I do a follow-up to that? So with that said, you know, I guess, I would, I would expect that the final plan is going to have a more robust section about how to accommodate those changes from pre-COVID to post-COVID. Outdoor dining being a big part of that. I'm sure in the listening sessions, and you're probably going to go through that, that, that's a big part of it. But it, but there's a conflict in that, right? And so I'm hoping that you as a consultant is going to provide us, how do we resolve the inherent conflict between those pedestrian zones, outdoor dining, some of the concerns that the aldermen have with the, you know, the, the, you know, how nice the parklets look, you know, there's differences of opinion about how those look, how they take up parking places. Like if we don't get that kind of feedback, I feel like this is like, maybe, I, I really want to make sure that we get that kind of feedback in this plan because that's really the, that was the impetus of this overall scope and kicking this off. So that's, that's the one thing. Do you want to respond to any of that or just take notes and?
I'm going to do both. I'm going to, so I took notes and I'm, we're going to talk about this, I think in like two minutes. So.
Okay. That's fine.
This is good.
Second question that I had then, just since I'm on a roll here. You know, you, you did address some of the questions about biking and I see some of the routes and things like that. I specifically would like to advocate for some, some dialogue or advice from the final plan about how to reduce pedestrian biking interaction on sidewalks, specifically in the downtown, specifically our younger members of our community. Right now, we're solving that problem with a sign on a sidewalk. If there are other alternatives to further reduce those conflicts in a pleasant way that doesn't require a temporary sign in the middle of a sidewalk, that would be great. Thank you.
Yep.
You know, I think we may want to go, because some of these questions are really going to be answered as we go through this. So I don't want to cut anyone off, but you may, Alderman Bostido.
Well, this was just to Noel's question though. Okay. So, because the referral you talked about, you referred to it as the outdoor dining referral. But then I was looking at DPZ's pending referrals and it was called Long-Term Downtown Design and Urban Planning Council approved a contract with, I can't say it, House.
House of Levine.
House of Levine, which is what we're hearing now, right? So this is the outdoor dining referral. This is a result of the outdoor dining referral that has become a new downtown.
Well, it's, it merged into one, I would say. I wouldn't say we would be doing a downtown plan just to address outdoor dining. So this outdoor dining is going to be a component. We've talked about with the consultant, the bicycle issues. So I think, let's go a little bit deeper.
Let me go into this. I do think we're going to address a lot of the comments that we're, we're talking, well, I hope. And what we're missing, that's part of what we want to talk about.
That, that's twice that we've asked. I'm just asking, this is it, right? This is the outdoor dining. That's, this is what's resulting from that referral.
Well, I, I think I'm answering it, but maybe not the way you want. I'm saying it's, it's part of this plan is incorporates the referral. This isn't just the referral. It's broader.
It's more than that, but there's nothing else coming from that referral. This is the solution.
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Tolu.
Well, and I don't mean to speak for Alderman Veremis. I know Alderman Hill's not here, but when I said the impetus was the outdoor dining, we, the referral that we were a part of did suggest an expanded approach. It wasn't just that. It was looking at, you know, because there were conversations at the time about like, should we close off York Street and make it a public? You know, so the referral was more than just outdoor dining. I just want, I referred to that as the impetus because that was the topic that kind of led to that broader referral. And I just didn't know, I didn't realize that we then went even beyond that slightly more broad to a full, like, I mean, we might be rezoning areas out of this plan because this is a full kit and caboodle.
This is, that's what it is. I mean, we haven't done the downtown plan, you know, since nine years, whatever. You know, so that's, that's what we're doing and incorporates a lot of things.
Right.
Alderman Veremis.
Thank you. Yes, the referral does speak to even zoning, planning, what the capital looks like in the future. And I think in those discussions, specifically about outdoor dining, it led to this referral. Do we want to just piecemeal things or do we want to get a full scope of what we can reimagine our downtown to be? Um, and had been several years since the plan was redone. So, yes.
Well, however we got here.
We got there.
We're here. So I mean, I kind of looked at it that we were ready to do a new downtown plan and would wrap this in, but we're here. Just to be clear, it's the entire downtown plan that will address all of the components of which we are speaking.
All right.
Nick?
So what I, what I want to go through now, I did, I broke it up into three different sections. So there's going to be a couple of different items that I want to go through. So the first one is for lane use and development. But as I go through this, so the intent here is this is, this is the beginning of the type of content or topics that we know we want to talk about in the downtown plan. How we talk about them and what the specific recommendations are, that is, that is still to be determined. But this list or these lists are really built out of the, the public engagement that we've collected so far. So that's the online feedback, the different workshops, the stakeholders. This is, some of this is our best practice, our understanding of what the challenges are in downtowns. But the specific recommendations or what the policies are or the options, sort of a to be determined. So a lot of that's going to be determined on what we hear in this visioning workshop and as our team starts to dive into this. So I'm just going to give kind of a high level, level over each one. Certainly if you have any questions, we can go through this, but I'd say let me go through these three sections. Make sure I've captured what you think are maybe like 90% of the, the issues of the topics and we'll, we'll go from there. One of the things that I, I know the plan's going to need to talk about is regional competition. Some of the challenges that you face and some of the comments that I hear when we're going through the, the, you know, the public engagement are, you know, we should be attracting more, you know, national chains that can, that can cite in the downtown. You are in a regional competition zone with Oakbrook. Not everybody knows that. That's something we want to talk about in the plan. It does make it very difficult. If you want to locate in, in Oakbrook Mall, it's very difficult because of the geography that they snap, that they can locate in, in downtown Elmhurst. So that means you got to be a little bit more creative. You have to look for different options for commercial retail and service uses. It's not the, it's not an end. It's just something that you need to be more considerate of. It is, it is interesting when I look back at the previous downtown plan and, and the issues that we were facing there. There is far less vacancy now than there was then. So it's certainly something in terms of adapting and, and building out the, the past plan's recommendations. It's something we just want to push forward, something I know we want to talk about in the plan and, and will address. The downtown transition, so connecting neighborhoods and minimizing impacts to surrounding residential neighborhoods. That's been an issue or a topic point from those that live in and around the downtown. So we just want to make sure that the recommendations that we're providing, we take into considerations what those impacts could be and, and what can we do to help minimize that? Housing affordability. I know that the city is currently conducting a, a study, something that'll address the, the housing affordability here in Elmhurst. It is something that came up during the, the different events, the different workshops and just concerns with being able to provide attainable housing or housing affordability, price points that could be difficult throughout the rest of downtown or throughout the rest of the community. Downtown could be that, that opportunity to provide those different housing options at a, at a cost that can allow, you know, different people to move in and, and kind of do the, the starter, could be the starter home, the starter unit, whatever it might be. One of the things that we'll want to look at is subdividing the core functional lane use zone. So if you go back and look at your current zoning map, and I can go back to it later. It does show a pretty extensive, basically from north all the way down to first is that core zone. One of the things we'll want to explore is some of the opportunities, if we do break that down, just to provide a little bit more guidance, kind of tying into even the next one about the types of uses, the types of, uh, building types that would be appropriate, the building heights. Something that we can maybe better prescribe in those areas. One of the other things I know we need to talk about, it came up in the original discussions for the, the plan. It also is something that we just, you know, we've heard as we've gone through the process is just clearly defining the building heights and including conditional, or including conditional uses. So we want to clearly define what the building heights need to be. And then we'll want to make sure that we're talking about what those conditional uses need to be as well. The plan will identify opportunity sites and catalyst sites. What'll be a little bit different than the previous plan is just providing some visualizations and, and some additional conceptual plans about what those redevelopment opportunity sites could look like. So we'll identify opportunity sites, which, you know, really any site in the downtown could redevelop. We want to identify the ones that are likely to or have the, the best potential to redevelop. And then these catalyst sites will be the ones that sort of serve as like a catalytic. If these were to redevelop, there might be three or five of them. If this site redevelops, could be consolidated from a couple parcels. It could spur investment. It could spur other development interest around it, other enhancements, other improvements.
Question, but.
Yeah.
Can you elaborate on the difference between a catalyst site and an opportunity site?
Yeah. So I sort of did there at the end, but I'll, let me, let me reiterate. So an opportunity site will identify, you know, potentially, we'll say 15 to 20 opportunity sites throughout the, the downtown. And again, any site tomorrow by right could redevelop. We're just, we're trying to identify the ones that we think are most likely to redevelop. Maybe are underperforming, could be a vacant lot, could be, you know, a surface lot that no longer is as, as needed as it was. So that's, that's like a typical opportunity site. We're going to identify three to five catalyst sites. These are going to be sites that sort of elevate, kind of rise to the top. If you were to develop these two or three opportunities or catalyst sites, you know, again, it would, it would spur development or enhancements or improvements all around that site. So it's, it's one that kind of is like a rising tide. It doesn't have to be just one parcel. You know, it could be under multiple ownerships. That's the kind of stuff we'll talk about in it.
That's sort of my question. So a catalyst site could very well be a combination of two parcels.
A hundred percent. Most likely it will be. I, in fact, I almost insist or ensure it will. Like it's unlikely one site would.
But would you describe any opportunity sites as combinations or would you describe?
Yep. Yeah. So there might be, it's more just like a priority, honestly, if I was going to say, yep. And we'll, we'll do that. I, I find that helpful and, and it kind of varies in plans, but I do think prioritizing, not what the city should be redeveloping, but just prioritizing your efforts in terms of if you were trying to attract, you know, go for priority ones over priority twos, that type of thing. We'll, we'll talk about the Elmer Center for Performing Arts. That was something that came up in a couple of different discussions. You know, just knowing where, well, uh, understanding where they're at in the process and understanding the impacts that that could have on, on, you know, on York, on first and those parcels in that, in that, you know, First Street area. It's certainly something that that tied with the metro improvements could radically change what that, that entire block looks like. So it's just a consideration. We want to make sure the plan provides some guidance on. And then just considerations for the Donut Hole parking area. You know, there's been a lot of different discussions about what that could be or, or what that needs to be in the past. I think we just want to provide maybe a couple of different approaches or options. The challenges there, parcel consolidation, varying property owners. So just, just a little bit more guidance, a little bit more direction on what that could be in the future, you know, moving forward. So those are just some of the, the high level lane use and development topics that, that we know we want to address. Again, it's, it's likely that we'll infill some additional topics based on the visioning workshop that we have later this week. Oh, no. Let's try. So next one, urban design and public realm. So this is where we're going to start to look more at the, the street, the building fabric. So, you know, that, that building infrastructure that's right there adjacent to the road and then the public right of way. So looking at things like building character, quality and design, I think pulling some of the ideas from the previous plan, but maybe updating that. Talking about some of the more modern building practices, best practices for infill development, that type of thing. We'll provide criteria for proposed public gathering spaces, plazas and green spaces. And this is something that's evolved a lot in the last 10 years. We talked about this in the previous plan, but the way people use public spaces post-COVID has changed quite a bit. And the way spaces are designed, both in the public realm, but also in private property, you know, as part of redevelopment. These are considerations that need to be made. There's a lot of different approaches for it. So we just want to kind of zero in on what public gathering spaces and plaza spaces could and should look like in the future, both in the public and private realm. Maintain on-street public or on-street parking versus expanding sidewalks along North York Street. This kind of ties back to the discussion we were just having that, that almost directly aligns with what I'll talk about in a second with outdoor dining and parklets. That programming of your streetscape, that programming of parking or sidewalk, is it both? Is it, is it one or the other? We're going to talk about different options, even specifically along North York Street, about what that looks like and what that could look like. As a consultant, our goal is to give you a series of options, give the community a series of options to discuss, explore, provide guidance on and, and see which one they like. We'll probably end this plan with a set of options. There might be like a preferred alternative with a couple of different options to consider. But certainly giving you a little bit more insight into different ways you could program, you know, the, the on-street parking and, and potentially expanding sidewalks and, and what that impact would be. Another thing that we've, we've talked a lot about in terms of a lot of the feedback that we've received is exploring a new streetscape plan. You know, modernizing your current streetscape, you know, looking at a different infrastructure. So maybe it's not payers. It could be something else. So we would just discuss key components of what makes a successful streetscape and how you could, you could kind of revisit this plan and start to explore different ways to program that overall streetscape. Outdoor dining and parklets, there's a couple of different ways to address it. Are they, are they temporary? Are they permanent? Are we, are they seasonal? Are they year round? Do we want specific design guidelines for this? Do we want to designate specifically where they need to be? So a lot of communities handle this in, in very different ways. So we're going to try to figure out which one is the most appropriate approach here in, in Elmhurst. And then start to identify, you know, what outdoor dining do we want to allow or encourage? Where should it be? And, and what are some of the criteria that we want to make sure to make this consistent within this overall streetscape plan, within this overall streetscape program? And then one of the last things that I sort of touched on this when we went through the existing conditions, but the sign, a signage plan. So just consistent messaging for gateways, wayfinding, directional finding, parking. So making it easier for people to delineate all the different signs that they're, you know, sometimes bombarded with when they move into a space. Making it more clear. You want people to feel like it's very easy to navigate your, your downtown. And, you know, as much as there are a lot of signs, the feedback was, it wasn't clear. It's not easy. So part of that is just messaging and maybe rebranding what some of those components look like. And it's stuff that the plan will need to provide some pretty specific guidance on. And then the last section or the last topic areas that we wanted to talk about were for transportation and parking. So the metro station improvement has a pretty significant impact on that First Street and what that area would look like, you know, along the rail. So just making sure that the metro station improvement is sort of incorporated into any future improvements or any future enhancements that we want to make sure could occur, you know, between Addison and York and even, even going further east and west. Traffic control and circulation, circulation patterns. So KLA is on our team. They're very familiar with a lot of the traffic flow and challenges that are in and around the, the downtown. So just making sure that we're, we're taking into consideration what the traffic control changes may need to be in the future, if any. And then also circulation patterns. Are there adjustments that we need to make to some of the current roadway infrastructure to accommodate, you know, additional pedestrian amenities or additional bike, bike lanes or bike routes or dedicated routes? So what would that look like? How would that fit in? And then what would the overall impacts be to the circulation patterns? Crosswalks, intersections and bump outs, just looking to continue to build on some of the improvements that you've put in the past, but really expanding that across the entire downtown. So again, going back to that approach is graphic. How do people coming from the residential area, walking into the downtown, you know, feel safe, feel a consistent rhythm? It's not a change in patterns all the time. Just making it easier for people to navigate. Parking types, this is something the plan will definitely need to talk about. You know, location, convenience, turnover. What are the different ways that we can, you know, help through the downtown plan? Make it easier for people to start utilizing the infrastructure that you've invested in. You have several. You have several parking decks, five, which is most than or more than most communities of your scale. So just getting people to utilize those decks and feeling more comfortable, you know, parking once and then walking through the rest of the downtown is a big, a big advantage that you have. So we want them to utilize it. You also do have a lot of on-street parking. So where there's on-street parking that's appropriate, are there different things that we need to do to make it more convenient? There's different ways to sign it, there's different ways to program it. Those are things the plan can talk about. Surface parking lot versus parking lot or parking deck enhancements. So, you know, if if a surface parking lot is going to continue to be in a space that it's in now, what are some of the improvements that need to be made or some of the enhancements that should be made? Just to make that a more attractive parking lot, maybe an easier one to navigate, those types of things. Bike routes, so that's going to be to downtown and then through downtown. So going back to one of the original comments from this discussion earlier. One of the challenges in a downtown is, you know, it's, it would seem like you'd want bike lanes on every road, but that's not really the case. Ideally, you want to give very strong routes that get you into the downtown. And you have to have the bike facilities and the locations that are easier to access so people can kind of park their bike in a in a space that they feel is safe and that's, you know, well lit. And there's a lot of parking available for it. And then they walk the downtown. That would be the ideal situation and you need multiple facilities. So that's the kind of stuff we'll talk about in the plan. You have installed several facilities, you know, over the last ten years, but you've seen these in other, they're getting substantial in size. You know, they're geographically located throughout their downtown. It's just a way to encourage people to bike to that place, drop their bike off, lock it up and then walk the downtown. So that would be one solution to the the issue that we were talking about. We'll provide a couple more just to make sure that you have different options to to kind of achieve that goal. And the last thing is just those, yeah, specifically the bike facilities, where they should be, what they could look like, covered versus not, a lot of different options for for bike facilities. So tho- those were the highlights of a lot of the different discussion points that we know want to be in the in the downtown plan. Again, what the specific recommendations or policies are, that's still to be determined, that's still stuff that we're working on. The visioning workshop, if you do get a chance to attend, it's great. People will have a lot of these types of discussion points as primers about, you know, we want to, we want to talk about traffic control and circulation patterns. What does that look like in a downtown in your mind? You know, help us kind of sketch it out, draw it out, write down your ideas. It's on us to start to disseminate all that information, break it down and and get a good read on how do we provide recommendations that help achieve all these different visions or these different goals. So those were the three sections that started to build out what we want to talk about in the plan. Again, I I would put this list at like eighty to ninety percent. This was pretty consistent in terms of feedback that we've heard. There's topics in here where we heard, you know, I want it to be like this, and then you hear the other side of it, I want it to be like this. So we know we have to talk about this. We just got to figure out what the right way to talk about it is, what the solutions need to be.
All right, so two things. One is Alderman Toledo, I I see what you're saying, I thought you were talking about the referral for the dining. If you're talking about the referral for the the broader one, this is that when we signed the contract with Housle Levine in like December of twenty-three or something like that. So that, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. What we're doing tonight now is these topics that Nick presented are the topics that will be talked about at the visioning session. Although it's not clearly shown here, we will come back with the benefit now of knowing what the topics are to talk about things that might be specific concerns with additional benefit from what has happened at the public visioning section session. But for tonight, we don't have to go into talk about the solutions, but what we do need to know is, is there any topic that we, you didn't see on those last three pages that you think should be part of what we're talking about for these visioning sessions? Because these came out of some, you know, I think these were from the original public one, meetings with staff, I think DPZ. And so we've kind of hit these topic areas of things that we will be going into detail. But if you think there's something that's missing, then this might be a a chance to talk about that.
Alderman Brennan.
Thank you. So this may be implied with with some of the the parking items that are laid out. But I I read someplace in the content that that there's concern of safety in in the parking garages. So I'm I'm assuming the findings would would have some sort of mitigating recommendation, whether it be lighting, emergency activation or communication of some sort. So I think that'd be important to be in scope.
Yep, that that would definitely be talked, I think what we're talking about, some of these enhancements to the parking decks or enhancements to the surfing, surface parking lot, be more than just aesthetic. I think there'd be some safety components tied to that, that's good.
I have a couple more, if that's okay. Okay, so from a EV perspective, I mean, we have a very limited amount of charging capacity. And I would argue that, I don't know, I I own a EV car. I I don't look for for charging in a parking garage here, I charge it at home. So I'm not even quite sure how frequent if those EV chargers are used in the parking decks. My question is, you know, there there's clearly a trend with with supercharging, you know, capabilities cropping up. You you mentioned Oakbrook, there's one just, you know, south of us on Oakbrook and and eighty-three in Oakbrook off across from the mall. Is there any trend with with communities of our size, you know, finding a place? You you talked about land usage for for supercharging capabilities. I got to tell you, you know, when I do, you know, drive outside of town on long trips, I love it when I find a place and hey, oh, my gosh, there's a restaurant, there's a supermarket or whatever. I plug in and I go do some things that I need to do, you know, whether it's eat or what have you. So I'm curious about those trends. And lastly, with respect to the train station, I think there there's probably an integrated use for for some of the the biking, you know, facilities, et cetera, there. But but I'm also curious with respect to sort of the the opportunity costs of, you know, improving or not improving, the timing of improving. What what is it that we give up if we delayed the improvements that that are on the table for the train station? Does that mean fewer, you know, people coming to our town? What what are the implications of that? I'm supportive of a new train station, but I'm curious what the implications might be. Thank you.
So you're saying the implications you want to look at if we don't do the train station?
Does the train station that we have today suffice? I I mean, you know, I I'm a proponent for a new train station, but I'm curious if we're negatively impacted if we do nothing.
Okay.
Alderman Nardini.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was thinking also about the train station. This is a a plan that we are imagining to guide the next ten years. If a new train station is a current uncertainty, in a perfect world, that would be a certainty before this downtown plan gets made. If it is an uncertainty, which it is right now, that is a complexity that the downtown plan needs to have contingencies for.
Other comments on the topics that we're going to be looking at Alderman Park, then Alderman Deuter?
Thank you. I just would like to clarify and or request in the urban design and public realm bullets where we're talking about criteria for public plazas, et cetera, and then maintaining or expanding sidewalks. Will it be discussed? It was briefly mentioned, there was just a little glimmer of hope in the previous downtown plan about a pedestrian mall. And I am wondering if that would be discussed as part of the options that you mentioned, pluses and minuses for that. Thank you.
Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. You've got the transportation and parking list of items. Pedestrian access, it's kind of sprinkled in there, we talk a little bit about sidewalks, we talk a little bit about crosswalks and bump outs. But I really want to make sure that kind of the pedestrian experience in downtown is central and something that really is kind of a a primary consideration and on all these different pieces. And then you also somewhere mention height and conditional uses. I know this came up in the joint meeting between our committee and the zoning planning commission, some certainty around height. And then I don't see listed, oh, I take that back, there's building character, quality and design. I think, you know, question would be, is there some discussion about building materials? And then specifically on design, how that relates to height? Any consideration for ways to soften height, whether that's upper level setbacks or, you know, different strategies that could be used to allow height, but do it in a way that kind of meets the pedestrian experience and the scale and whatnot.
Nick, I I don't remember seeing it in what you just went through, but I know in the preliminary, we talked about height issues and was that in there?
Yeah, I I might have moved, maybe I moved through it quickly, but just talking about clearly defining building heights, including conditional uses, didn't didn't quite get to what you're talking about. But we would talk about building character, design, when we did the design guidelines before, and I imagine we would be, we would be modernizing and kind of updating this, we would talk about materials. I I do feel the previous plan might have talked about upper level setbacks, but I don't know if it was, I don't know if we talked about it enough to talk about different ways to kind of soften what a height of a building would be and how you would perceive it from the street and what that built form, you know, sideline looks like.
You know, I would say I hope when we, you know, we've got the plan and then you talked about the implementation of that, right? Kind of what comes next? You know, kind of really, I I appreciate you saying options, but we, you know, I hope that we get to a point where they're just not concepts floating around. But truly, this is what it's going to look like. You know, I think there's a need for certainty. I know that came up as it relates to height and how we approach height. And I I think Alderman Toledo was talking earlier when it comes to outdoor dining and the conflict with parking. You know, again, we don't, we've had lots of discussions around it. We really need the help in getting to the finish line of of how do we do it?
Yeah, I mean, the, obviously, my my goal when we do this plan is that we we leave this plan in a place where you have a level of certainty. When somebody comes in, they know what it's gonna, what it's gonna look like, I suppose. And and perhaps this isn't directly what you're asking, but there are going to be some options because one of the first things that we would recommend is you're, you're going to want to potentially update your streetscape plan. So if that's the direction you're going to go, there's like the current infrastructure can support this kind of outdoor dining. If you do go through a streetscape plan exercise, you might improve this or this or that. You know, you might make some changes that would allow you to do other things with your outdoor dining or with your side furnishing zones, whatever that might be. So I think that when I say options, it's more of if you continue to do this, you you should, you should provide these types of improvements. If you're going to explore streetscape improvements overall, then you definitely need to program in these types of elements. This is important to the community. So we're just trying to set the stage for the next group that's going to come in to give you that level of specificity on like a streetscape plan. In the meantime, yeah, I agree, the outdoor dining is something that we we certainly want to leave with like pretty clear direction on on what you should do now.
Thank you.
Alderman Veramus.
Thank you. And so will the plan then talk about short term and long term implementation?
In in some areas, yeah, where where there are solution, like part parking, I'm going to pick on a parking lot, but a a parking lot would be an example of a short term improvement would be to landscape it appropriately. Long term improvement might be redevelopment or a complete reimagining of what that parking lot is, because we don't need that parking lot there, we're serviced in other ways. So that would be an example of like short term, just improve the parking lot so it it aesthetically looks, you know, better. But long term, we'd like to see this as an opportunity site redeveloped. And and so that that's an example of where short and long might happen. There's others where we're like, no, I mean, this is clearly what we want to do. This is the direction that we've received from the public and best practice is to move in this direction. So where there's certainty, we'll provide that. Where there might be an option that you need to explore or priorities or phasing, we'll we'll provide that. So, yeah, it's not going to be a lot of like pick your, pick your own future, but there will be some where you're going to want a couple of options, I think.
Alderman Erby.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the items that I didn't see that I thought might be of interest to the constituents, council, et cetera, was the noise level in transportation. So when I'm sitting out on York between the tracks and Third, outdoor dining, the cars that come over the tracks and kind of use it as just a cruising venue for the younger or even older, whoever. It's loud motor, you know, people revving up and it just reverberates. It's kind, it's kind of like the the analogy we made with the bikes that Alderman Toledo said. And we said, well, maybe if we got all the bikes parked on the outer rim to some level and we had this, you know, no bike zone, no fly zone, no car zone, all dining zone. And we had, you know, one or two streets closed off as a part of a conceptual idea. How many, you know, how much restaurant seating would we get? How much of that noise I just mentioned would go away? How much of that bike traffic would go away if we had a core, you know, no no moving parts other than, you know, humans walking zone could be that pedestrian mall item that Alderman Park talked about. So I think if you put that together, wouldn't that be an attractive package maybe that we might want to entertain?
It's an option to explore for sure. I know a couple of people have have mentioned it. I would say for every person I've I've heard mention that, there's there's obviously direct opposition to that concept. You know, if you're a property owner who doesn't, doesn't have outdoor dining, a pet mall might not be the best use for you. So it's just, that's the kind of thing where we, I think that's where we need to talk about some options. You know, if you're a, if you're a banker, if you're a service use, you like the outdoor parking or you like the on-street parking, you don't really need outdoor dining. You know, a pedestrian mall might be eyes off of your, of you use. So that's just, there's a balance there that we got to think about. I know a lot of people go to like Arlington Heights, they talk about Boulder. Those are, those are great examples. They've made some pretty substantial use changes in those areas and they do it on areas, the roads that are not a key thoroughfare. So they still have their routers around the downtown. York Street is a pretty critical road, so we'd have to look at other, are there other roads that we should explore for that? That's, I think that's the kind of stuff we would want to talk about. I imagine this comes up in the visioning workshop. I would think this is a discussion point that several people bring to the table.
Alderman Jensen.
Thank you, Mayor. When you talk about opportunity sites and catalyst sites, I assume that includes buildings that currently are standing and maybe run down or whatever. So I don't know if it applies to this, but I also noticed that the Schiller Street Garage is one of the, is the least utilized, maybe thirty to forty percent. I think if there was a way similar to what you have on Addison, where's a cut through between the garage and York where a lot of the businesses are? If there's some way to do that on the other side to get to the Schiller Street Garage, that might drive more people to park there versus circling on the street, try to park or going over a block over, block west to Addison. Something to think about if there's a way to configure that with one of the redevelopment sites.
So like a cut through on the east side of York that would cut over to the Schiller lot?
To make it more direct rather than going all the way around the block, which I'm happy to do, but I know it's can be a hike and bad weather.
Yeah, yeah, and as much as I, and I, I think it's an interesting idea. I also think just tell, like, getting a message to people that there's a parking deck there. It is surprising to me how many people don't know that it's around that corner, especially the amount of people that come up Robert Palmer. There are people who come up Robert Palmer and don't know that's a parking deck. I know that because we talked to him and it was just, it was surprising. So again, I think that's where the the signage and the the wayfinding is important, it's a good point.
Alderman Erby.
Yeah, quick follow up on that, that last point was if we had, you you had those traffic routes coming into downtown. And if, you know, people could have a people mover, let's just pretend we had Disneyland downtown. And you'll notice when you're at Disneyland, there's no cars in Disneyland unless it's on a ride. And then they have people movers that move you from the parking lot to Disneyland, to the front door. What's to stop us from having more mini transit trolley, you know, just anything that holds more than four people? And they can go get picked up and bring them into downtown and they don't need to have a car. Just ways of reducing the traffic inbound with one person in a car. And if we could go to, you know, give them a bonus round, maybe give them a dollar off on a ticket or something to have four people in a car. You know, we, we got to start moving people to a higher density mobility and smaller packages and stop, you know, we got to stop the St. Charles parking lot, the York parking lot and the, you know, the North Avenue inbound, you know, thirteen thousand car, thirty-three thousand, you know, thirteen thousand coming down. down York.
Yeah.
So, you know, at some point, it seems like we just have to, let's get a little bit more Disneyland thought and get people movers going.
Thank you. One thing I don't really see a lot of anymore, so I don't even know if it's applicable, but you did list here about the Center for Performing Arts and it might, this might be an impact with that possibly coming in our near term. Valet parking, having valets, and that's something that if we had something like the Center for Performing Arts where you have traffic not only from the metro or from the train station, but you also have people driving up, how would we incorporate or is that something to consider when we're reviewing redoing the downtown plan?
Yeah.
Other topics? Alderman Udera.
I'm assuming city center and the businesses are all going to be involved in these decisions and planning.
Yeah, they've been stakeholders throughout the process. They've been invited to all the different workshops that we're hosting, so certainly we'd want to keep them in the loop as we go through this. Working group includes members, that type of thing. So, yeah.
Mayor.
Alderman Brennan.
Thank you. Just one last question. I know the meaning of housing affordability, but how do I think about it, you know, under land use and development?
Just, just exploring or providing, I guess, allowing for and providing the types of housing that could give you that, that missing middle, so that opportunity for a price point that might be more affordable than trying to buy a whole, like a single-family detached home. Are there going to be options in the downtown that are, you know, slightly more affordable or more affordable? What are the price points that we're trying to hit? What's the market looking for? It's not to say that all downtown housing is affordable, it could just be a component of it. It's something we want to talk about.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Anyone else?
Well, you wouldn't want to. Oh, yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Sorry. So at next week's council meeting, I'm sorry, Nick, nothing to do with this. Next week's council meeting, Chuy Garcia, Representative Congressman Chuy Garcia will be here to give a federal update to the council. His staff members have asked if you have any questions in advance that you can get to me so that they can, they can come prepared with answers for that, they'd appreciate it. So if you want to email those to me or the mayor beforehand, that'd be great. And then the other item, I saw a few looking at it, the, that newspaper that was at your place was given to us last week by one of the speakers. We didn't get it out after that meeting, so we put it out tonight, so you know how it got here. And I think we ran short maybe on that side. Sorry, that's.
We'll have to share.
Forgiven.
All right. So Nick, thank you for your presentation. I think, want to thank everyone for your attention. As I say, we were looking at the topics. I think we've got a broad range and they're not necessarily easy, straightforward topics. We'll have a lot of options, but these are things, as I've said, that the public visioning session will touch on. We are the decision makers. It will come back to us at least for some discussion in the fairly near future and then at the end. So stay tuned. With that, I'll ask for Alderman Nardini.
Sorry, just one question. Mr. City Manager, what is Representative Garcia coming to update us on?
Give us a federal update on items that the Illinois contingent has been working on in Washington DC.
So whatever it is that he is presenting to city council, understood?
Correct.
Thank you.
If there is something specific that you want to hear about, please let me know.
Totally. Yes, understood. Thanks.
All right. I think we're ready to roll. Have a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Deuter, second by Alderman Veramus. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We're adjourned. Thank you.[1777.03]